Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenas tardes. Estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo. Está en el edificio, por favor, ven a la cámara.
Good morning everybody. Welcome to City Hall, welcome to Council Chambers, and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today Wednesday, May 29, 2002. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday and Friday at 10:00 a.m., and council meetings are open to the public. We can also be viewed live from home on your cable station, Channel 35. We can be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is now nearly 10:30 a.m., and we are still shy of a quorum. We have eight members present. We need ten for a quorum and to be able to conduct business today. We do have a couple of presentations and special recognitions. We will begin with those as we await two more members. The chair recognizes at this time Councilmember Gruel. The chair recognizes at this time Councilmember Gruel. And also Eric Garcetti, who is sick today. I want to make sure and introduce his participants. Gloria Medina, Maria Benitez, Sonia Rivas, and Alex Garcia. Oh, and they've got the bright yellow sweater, that's great. I know as well that I'm going to have a chance to see some of my colleagues, my participants on June sixth for a program we're doing at the Airtel Plaza. And I just want to say thank you for all of you being here today and participating. It's very, very important to learn about our city because all of us around this table sit here and make decisions and policy issues about our neighborhoods. And we can't do that without people like you, who tell us what's happening in our neighborhoods, who participate in that decision-making process. We are just one of many people who need to make sure our city is a better place in which to live, and our San Fernando Valley, those of you that are in the San Fernando Valley area. So I'd like to acknowledge my other colleagues, and if they would introduce their participants. And first, Councilmember Ed Reyes.
Thank you, Councilmember. Wendy Gruel for that overview. And I need to emphasize everything that Councilmember Gruel has stated. But in this dynamic city where we have such diversity, it's so important for all of us to get involved. And it's just as important for us to start creating that infrastructure, that environment in which we can start finding ways to help out our men and women in blue, police officers, how we support our fire department, how we support our neighborhoods, our children. And the best way to do that is to understand what the city has to offer, how we can coordinate, and how we can establish that network, especially in our communities in which there are many languages. There's Spanish, Chinese, I mean, all of Central Americans, different dialects, South Pacific Asian Islands. We are such a rich city, but we become poor when we do not engage this process in such a way where we can enrich in our lives. And for that, I thank you for being here, because you are taking the step to show everyone else, all your vecinos, all your friends, your cohorts, what City Hall has to offer and how you can continue to support our neighborhoods. So for that, I'd like to thank Ilana Sanchez. She's here, thank you for being here. Gloria Villarreal, Maria Esquivel, Alida Soriano, Maria Morales, Hilda Rodriguez, and Sandra Bello. Thank you so much for being here. It's very important that we can share with our neighbors and our families the environment in which we're living. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Zain. Councilmember Zain.
On behalf of the third council district out there in the San Fernando Valley, we have representatives, Firda Fernandez, you'll please stand, good morning, and Rosalba Waterford, from the third district. Thank you both for your dedication, hard work.
And Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you, Councilmember Gruel. And I want to welcome some folks from my district here. It's terrific that you're doing this because what you're doing is by empowering yourself with knowledge about how local government works. And you're not just going to learn about city government, I mean, you're going to learn about county government, state government, federal government, it's all interrelated, and yet, they all are separate, and they're in separate boxes, and you have to learn how to make the system work. By doing that, you're empowering yourselves, you're empowering your families, you're empowering your neighborhoods, your communities, your schools, your parks. You're really on your way to becoming a strong advocate to make your community a better place to live. And so I'd like to ask the following people if they could rise to be recognized. Sylvia Perez, Iris Serrano, Letty Fuentes, and Rosa Rivera. Thank you for coming from my district today and thanks for being here.
Councilmember Tom LeBange is going to introduce Councilmember Misakowsky.
Thank you very much, Wendy Gruel. Wendy Gruel, you forgot to tell everybody what brought us here in the first place.
Well, please do.
Wendy Gruel and I were members of Mayor Tom Bradley's Youth Council when we had an opportunity to come down and contribute. Wendy from the Valley and I from the Griffith Park area, and worked with the great Olivia Mitchell, if I could say that, from Tom Bradley's staff, and worked with children, youth, and family in its predecessor days. But I'm just pleased to greet you here this morning and let you know and everyone who hears my voice that the doors of this building and any public building are always open. And they're only as good as the people who walk in those doors, only as good as the people who fight for the good fight. So whatever your dreams and hopes are, to improve your neighborhood, focus on those and move in that direction, and you will have success. It's a tremendous story, but it's true. I'd like to introduce from Councilmember Misakowsky's office, who's up the street at the LAFCO Local Organization Committee for the County on our matter about detachment that is being focused on Los Angeles now, but from the eleventh district. Could I have Irma Paz, Roxanne Moore, Priscilla Gabriel, Virginia Flores, Renaya Manzanares, Maria Garcia, Maria Rodriguez, Raquel Rojas, Virginia Rojas, Victoria Palma, and Della Nebulet, if I said that correctly. Please welcome the great eleventh district representative's civic awareness training. And from the eleventh district that touches the Pacific Ocean, we go to the fourteenth district, which is this northeast and Boyle Heights area, the great bridges that cross the LA River. We have Gabriela Alvarado, Josefina Avila, please rise, and Carmen Garcia. Did I have that correctly for everybody? Please welcome them for the civic awareness training program. Congratulations on behalf of Councilmember Nick Pacheco, Councilmember Cindy Misakowsky, and myself, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LeBange. I don't have a list for Councilmember Janice Hahn's area, so those of you that are from the fifteenth district, could you stand? Oh, great, thank you very much. I want to introduce you as well. Thank you. And I'd like to welcome up to the microphone, Antonio Alcala, who has worked on this project for a few words.
Good morning, and thank you very much for welcoming us here. I would like to thank you very much, Ms. Gruel, for providing the bus so we could come to this meeting. It was very painful to be sitting on the freeway for more than an hour, but we are here. I would like to acknowledge the group of ladies that are coming with me from local District C, where Mr. Collins, our superintendent, is very supportive this year of our endeavors. These ladies, I will ask them to stand up, please stand, ladies from District C. All these ladies that you see here. I call them family or parent center directors. There are community reps whom are being paid for three hours, yet they give eight or ten hours a day to make sure that our children and our families are getting the service they need, that they're learning the system. And today was a great opportunity to come here so they can see how we can make things change, how we can influence the changes for our children. And Mr. President, Mr. Alex Padilla, I'm so proud of you because you are a kid from my community, and you are the president of the City Council, and I use you as an example on a daily basis for our children. So they can be successful. I've been here for twenty-eight years. I never had an idea that I could be here, but education, learning the language, I still learn the language, my second language, but that opens doors. And it's sad, but it's true, there's a lot of people out there that they think that we do not belong. I'm here to tell everybody, these ladies and I belong everywhere. This is our society, this is where our children are growing, and we want to thank you all for the opportunity to be here and to let everybody know that we are here to work together to make things happen for our children and our communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony, and all of you that are here today, and I hope you learn a lot, and this will not be your last time to come visit us in City Council and speak out about issues you feel are important. So thank you so very much for taking the time to be here, and please have a wonderful day. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Mr. LeBange. Members of council, Mr. President, come on out. Cathedral Chapel School, this is a very special school in Los Angeles. Cathedral Chapel School is located in the Miracle Mile section of the city of Los Angeles, and it's been a school for a long, long time, back to nineteen thirty, and it's committed to providing students with educational and moral foundations necessary to meet the challenges and succeed in this new millennium. Cathedral Chapel School encourages and enables students to meet and then excel in academic standards set by the state of California. And the school since nineteen ninety-seven has competed in the California Catholic Schools' annual Junior High Academic Decathlon, an event that has required intense research, rigorous study in grammar, math, literature, science, fine art, social studies, religion, speech, and further requirements, requires the development of superior logic skills. And whereas the eligibility requirement to participate in this Academic Decathlon for Catholic schools creates an opportunity for these students to compete with other schools throughout Southern California, and whereas on March two thousand and two, these great students behind us right here competed in this California Catholic School Junior High Academic Decathlon, and were from the Archdiocese of Los Angeles at Loyola Marymont University, not at Immaculate Heart, but at Loyola Marymont. And Cathedral Chapel School earned trophies for first place in literature, grammar, and religion, second place in science, third place in math, fourth place in social studies, fifth place in fine arts, first place in the super quiz team, and eleventh place in logic quiz. And whereas Cathedral Chapel School placed first overall in the Decathlon and earned the right to represent the Archdiocese of Los Angeles in the state finals in Sacramento on May fourth, now therefore being ruled all by the Los Angeles City Council by adoption of this commendation, we hereby commend the great students at Cathedral Chapel School located in the Miracle Mile section of the city of Los Angeles, and know that their bright faces and energy and their dedication will later prove to be great for their success as they grow and compete in other areas of life. And on behalf of the council, seconded by Janice Hahn, and our president, Alex Padilla, attested to by our great city clerk, Mike Carey, I present this commendation to the champions for the Catholic School Section Junior High Division Academic Decathlon. Congratulations. Mr. Del Pozo is a coach and a teacher. Okay, good.
I'm Joanne Griffo. I'm the principal at Cathedral Chapel School. I've been the principal now for eleven years. And we are extremely proud of our team. We've only been in this competition for five years, and we started out in forty-third place, and in five years, we rose to first place. And this resolution was submitted and written before the state competition on May fourth, and we did go to Sacramento and win the state competition as well. So we are also the state champions, and unfortunately, we're not going to Washington DC this year. They're not having nationals, but we hope to repeat our win next year and go on to state and to Washington. Thank you.
Congratulations, state champs, city champs. Okay. Mr. Holden.
I'm just standing next to one of the parents of the championship team. I think that's the daughter right there. And this is state champion. I was just told that they didn't take lunch breaks all year round, studying, all during the day and many hours at night. And he's a proud parent, just say it.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to dedicate for all the hard work they put in, lunch, after school, and it's worth it. They are now the state champion, Academic Decathlon, Cathedral Chapel Junior High.
And that's a proud mother for you. Thank you, Mr. President, for permitting that. And LeBange, Tom, you know, if I had the opportunity to redraw the lines, I'd go just a few blocks to the west and a few blocks to the north, and they'll be in a different district, but they're being served well by you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden, but I wouldn't let that happen because my parents were born, were married at Cathedral Chapel School, so would you please say a few words on behalf of the teaching corps?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you. My name is Mrs. Moldavon. I'm the language arts teacher and co-coach along with Mr. Roman Del Pozo. I just wanted to thank Mr. LeBange and all of you for allowing us to come here today and for taking time to recognize the importance of education. Sometimes, I mean, we're all for the Lakers, we want them to win, but it is nice that we take a moment and realize what it is these kids do. Our students live by an honor code as well. They maintain A grades throughout the year, and every Friday and Monday, they work till five o'clock on logic puzzles, research, and preparation. We scored one of the highest scores ever scored in the state decathlon for logic, and we won the super quiz in the state finals. So I'm very proud of this team, and I just wanted to say that we wanted there to be proof that we were the state champions. This is the T-shirt we have for Mr. LeBange, and on the back is the logo that was... This is our principal, Mrs. Griffin, and Mr. Del Pozo is a coach and a teacher. Okay, good. We're going to have our principal say a few words.
I'm Joanne Grifo, I'm the principal at Cathedral Chapel School, I've been the principal now for 11 years, and we are extremely proud of our team. We've only been in this competition for five years, and we started out in 43rd place, and in five years, we rose to first place. And this resolution was submitted and written before the state competition on May 4th, and we did go to Sacramento and win the state competition as well. So we are also the state champions, and unfortunately, we're not going to Washington, D.C. this year, they're not having nationals, but we hope to repeat our win next year and go on to state and to Washington. Thank you.
Congratulations. State champs, city champs. Mr. Holden.
I'm just standing next to one of the parents of the championship team. I think that's the daughter right there. And she's a state champion. I was just told that they didn't take lunch breaks all year round, studying, all during the day and many hours at night. And he's a proud parent, just say it.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to dedicate for all the hard work they put in, lunch after school, and it's worth it. They are now the state champion, Academic Decathlon Cathedral Chapel Junior High.
And that's a proud mother for you. Thank you, Mr. President, for permitting that. And Laban, Tom, you know, if I had the opportunity to redraw the lines, I'd go just a few blocks to the west and a few blocks to the north, and they'll be in a different district, but they're being served well by you, for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Holden, but I wouldn't let that happen because my parents were born, we're married at Cathedral Chapel School, so would you please say a few words on behalf of the teaching corps?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you. My name is Mrs. Moldovan, I'm the language arts teacher and co-coach along with Mr. Roman Del Pozo. I just wanted to thank Mr. Laban and all of you for allowing us to come here today and for taking time to recognize the importance of education. Sometimes, I mean, we're all for the Lakers, we want them to win, but it is nice that we take a moment and realize what it is these kids do. Our students lived by an honor code as well, they maintained A grades throughout the year, and every Friday and Monday, they worked till 5 o'clock on logic puzzles, research, and preparation. We scored one of the highest scores ever scored in the state decathlon for logic, and we won the super quiz in the state final, so I'm very proud of this team, and I just wanted to say that we wanted there to be proof that we were the state champions. This is the T-shirt we have for Mr. Laban, and on the back is the logo that was, the artistry was done by Crystal, who, Crystal Lee, the daughter of our mother over there, it has the names of a friend of Nate Holden, and it has everybody's event, so thank you all very much for taking the time, and I want to tell you, the future is in good hands with young people like this.
I can ask Crystal Lee, one of the outstanding students, to say a few words.
Hi, my name is Crystal Lee, and I'm here on behalf of my team. I'd like to say that I am very proud of Cathedral Chapel's Academic Decathlon team, and I think we put in a lot of effort this year, and we've tried our hardest, and it really paid off, but we couldn't have done it without great coaches like Miss Moldovan, Del Pozo, and a great principal like Miss Grifo, and outstanding parents who always supported us. So I'd like to thank everybody and Tom Laban for inviting us here, and it's a really big honor, so thank you.
Crystal, thank you, and I'm just going to say one thing. Mark, did you want to say something? I want Mark to say something first, because he's got, señorita, please. Okay, this is for the next time you're in the decathlon championship series, Politics 101, if someone gives you a T-shirt, you put it on. Thank you, Mr. Laban. Chair recognizes Mr. Zain, then Mr. Wendy Thomas. Congratulations to you for the wonderful work, and I also want to acknowledge that we have here with us this morning another group, West Valley Christian Academy, and if you'll please stand, this is Students' Day in City Council, students from West Valley Christian Academy, 50 students, 5th graders, here to observe activities at City Hall. Welcome to you, congratulations to you, the future is definitely in good hands with the youth that we have today. Congratulations to you all, and congratulations to West Valley for being here, and enjoy your tour of City Hall today. You can wave to the camera in the back, wave to the camera, there you go, everybody. Okay, there you go. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. Zain, are those future Academic Decathlon champions from your district? Mr. Wendy Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, I'm delighted that we have taken the opportunity to acknowledge these extraordinary students who have distinguished themselves in terms of their academic pursuits. I wish to encourage them to continue to do so. Those things that will distinguish you are the engagement of the life of the mind, and it would seem to me that these are the things that help us build a sense of pride and hope with respect to our future. And so I'm delighted that we are able to celebrate your accomplishments this morning in the Los Angeles City Council chamber, and I think we ought to give those young people another round of applause, and to the parents and the faculty. Mr. President, if we're done with the presentations, I see Mr. Laban exiting with his guest, his esteemed guest. It is my honor now, Mr. President, light of the fact that the hour is 10:52, moved for adjournment.
There's a motion to adjourn for lack of quorum, is there a second? Is there an objection? Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, we received prior notice that at least three members, Ms. Hahn, Ms. Galanter, would be here in about seven minutes, and I think they were notified us of that, they are not excused today, they let us know in advance that they would be arriving. Of course, Ms. Misakowski and Mr. Burnson probably at LaFco, and there's a legitimate reason for that. I would say that it would be appropriate for us to stall for about seven minutes to give them a chance to arrive at 11 o'clock, so that we don't have to have a...
It is just shy of 10:55, we will hold on till 11 o'clock, does that sound fair, Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, I think that's very fair.
And if at 11 o'clock, we have yet to achieve quorum.
Or we could urge their staff to contact them and see just about where Ms. Hahn is in route.
Mr. Holden, we've been doing that for about 55 minutes now.
I understand, but she sort of noticed that she'd be arriving, calling the clerk at 11 o'clock this morning.
Thank you very much.
So I was told.
We'll give it a couple more minutes, but we are shy of quorum.